No roll calls tonight.
Don't tempt me.
7:00 PM on the dot. What is this? This is a joke.
Yeah, not even a Dunkin' Donuts size tonight.
Zero.
I barely know you. Oh, is that the Cavill? Am I supposed to stand up?
Bless you. Something happened here. What am I doing? Just wanted to see you all stand. It's a little bit strange. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Newburyport City Council meeting of August 12th. Before we begin, I'd like to have a moment of silence for a community member that recently passed away. Kevin Riley passed away recently. He was the Partridge in a Bear Tree owner. Passed away after an 18-month battle with pancreatic cancer. He owned and operated two Partridge in a Bear Tree stores. One in Newburyport for 23 years and at 84 Wolf Street in Salem for 10 years. Very active in the community, very active with the Chamber. Very well-known character for those who knew him at his store and through all of the various activities he did downtown. He received his diagnosis in 2023 and dedicated himself to raising funds to support efforts to find, do research to end pancreatic cancer. Recently, again, passed away a couple of weeks ago. He's survived by his husband, Ronald Center, his partner for the past 18 years and sisters and brothers and nieces and nephews. Our condolences go out to his family and if we could just take a moment to remember him and think of them. Thank you. If you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bless you. Mr. Clerk, if you could be so kind as to call the roll.
On behalf of Mr. President.
Good.
The roll call for the Newburyport City Council meeting of August 12th at 7:00 PM. Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Zied.
Here.
Counselor Doherty.
Yes.
Counselor Grantis is absent. Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Khan is absent. Counselor Lane.
Here.
Counselor McCauley.
Here.
And Counselor President Cameron.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great. All late file items.
We have a number of late file items. You'll see on the amended agenda. There's an Order 594, which is a grant acceptance for a $25,000 parking study to go to PW and S. Communication 571 is an extension for the acting marshal for another 30 days to receive and file. That's a notice. Application 225, 226, and 227, movable sign permit applications, presumably to go to license and permits. And that, those are the late files.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files to their respective committees.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. That would lead us to public comment. We'll take online comment if there is any commenters out there.
There is no one that signed it up. I don't know about online.
Seeing no comment in public and no comment online, we will move to the mayor's comment. And there is no mayor's comment.
Moving right along.
The over and under on this meeting has drastically changed. That would bring us to the consent agenda.
Which I would happy to report on. It includes the approval of the minutes for July 22nd. There are two communications. A communication 570, which is a supplemental energy analysis report from EGA Architects with respect to 59 Low Street to go to CS. An application 224, which is a block party, September 21st on Rusher Street to go to license and permits. There are no transfers. There are the following three appointments. Jill Gross, 3 Pace Street to the Cultural Council on 2027. Cynthia Sharpton, 12 and 1/2 Market Street, a reappointment to the Cultural Council, same, 2027. And Monica Bartley, 58 Temple Street, reappointment to the Cultural Council, again, 2027. Following items are removed from the respective committees. Budget and Finance, Order 582, 593, 591, Order 592. Community Services, there are three items. Appointment 495, excuse me. Communication 565 and Order 590. License and Permits, Application 223 is coming out, Planning and Development. Communication 568 is coming out. Public Works and Safety, four items. Communication 566, Order 589, Communications 533 and 538. And that is the consent agenda of the season.
Motion to remove Communication 570? Oh, sorry.
So 570, removed.
Is Communication 570 out? Coming into the regular agenda, 570.
Okay.
As amended. I'll second as amended.
All right. So Counselor Zied made the motion, seconded by Counselor Preston. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, great. So that would bring us to the regular agenda.
Which would be Communication 570, I believe, Mr. President.
Yeah, so mayor's update. We do have an update in the packet.
I'm happy to.
I don't recall seeing the email, but it's in the agenda when I just looked online.
Mr. President, it is posted. There is such a thing that exists.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. First reading appointments, seeing none. Communications, that would be Communication 570, or that was removed.
That's the supplemental memo, Energy Analysis Report from EGA on 59 Low Street.
Counselor Harmon?
I'll defer to the chair if she disagrees. But given that this was a memo submitted to help us in deliberation of something that's coming out of committee tonight, I think it's best if we receive and file this. I think it doesn't have much value in going through the committee process at this point. So I would just motion to receive and file this.
Motion made. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Oh, yeah, second.
Okay.
I just, I couldn't have said it better. I mean, we had a really healthy discussion about this in committee and I will report that out tonight. So I fully support receiving file.
All right. So motion made and seconded to receive and file Communication 570. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I think we can just do voice vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, 9-0. Transfers, seeing none. Second reading appointments.
So the second reading appointments, there are a number of them. Tricia Hasset, 19 Merrimack Street, Commission on Disabilities until 8:15, 2027. Same for Barbara Chambers, 237 Story Avenue. Same date, 8:15, 2027. The following three, Cultural Council until 8:15, 2027. Andrew Thomas, 44 Boardman Street. Mary Jacobson, 16 Parker Ridge Way. And Melissa Van Vokey, 89 High Street. And then lastly, Tracy Fisher, 53 Purchase Street to the Tree Commission until 8:15, 2027.
Motion approved on second reading?
Second.
Is that collectively?
Collectively.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion made and seconded to approve those all collectively. We'll do a roll call.
Roll call on approving all second reading appointments. Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
And Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Orders seeing none. We would go to ordinances.
Ordnances is 177, which is an amendment to residential parking, Chapter 13-180, filed by Counselor White.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Safety?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. We can do a voice vote on that at this point in the game to refer to committee. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, that goes 9-0. That leads us to committee items.
Motion to approve Order 582?
Second.
Order 582 dated 6/10/24 is the acceptance of the nonjudicial settlement agreement from the Curtis Memorial Fund. We did get to this on July 25th. Present at the meeting, we had Karis North and then we had some representatives of the trust itself that we were fortunate enough to have join us. So I think most are fairly familiar with it at this point, but for the benefit of the public and the record, this trust fund was set up in honor of the late Mayor Curtis, who was mayor of Newburyport quite some time ago. But his, the remainder of his family set up this trust and sort of the last in the line passed away and that's what kicked off this process. The trust was formed for the benefit of Newburyport, but essentially the foundational setup of the trust was not in a good state in order to be able to fulfill its desired goal, which was to donate to the city of Newburyport. And so because there are no living heirs to amend the trust, it created this different process where, whereby basically there are, it's a tripartite or three-way agreement. The court, the trustees, and the city can agree to amend the trust and in doing so actually change the trust itself. And that's essentially where we are today. So the court has done its part. The trustees have done their part and now the city is doing its part. And I should say there is a fourth piece, which is the Attorney General does need to sign off, or at least the Attorney General's office needs to sign off on this in order for it to be effectuated. So why does the trust need to be changed? As I mentioned, essentially it's, you know, probably enough to write some books about, but it's not set up in a legal way that allows it to donate to the city and there are tax implications that then fall from it. And so in order to put the trust into a position where it can, which is essentially a 501(c)(3) and to create some additional clarity around how, you know, funds can be used and the creation of some additional trustees, those are some of the most salient changes to the trust. They will be in a position to provide essentially an annual donation to the city that we expect to enjoy for many years to come. And so that is exactly what this order does. Should the city council approve it and the mayor sign it, then the city essentially accepts the changes to the trust through this nonjudicial settlement agreement. And we'll go to the Attorney General. We did have a decent conversation around the whole thing. Probably first one is timeline. So once it passes the council and the city, again, the courts and the trustees have done their part. The estimate for the Attorney General's was talked about in weeks terms. You know, I think there was some thought it might be much longer given how long some things take to process. But this one was not deemed to, not thought to be a very controversial one. So hopefully would be done in a faster amount of time. There was some conversation around the desire to increase the number of trustees and would that change the expense load on the trust? That was something that was asked. The answer was no. The idea of having more trustees was continuity more than anything else. Having a single trustee, sort of a single point of failure was of concern. But they really expect to split the fees. So there shouldn't be any major impact on cost or things like that. They described as redundancy as well. Then we did get into a conversation about how the funds could be used. They can be used for the benefit of the city of Newburyport, provided that they are used for charitable purposes. Of course, that is a short sentence with a lot of discussion around what's a charitable purpose and so forth. One of the representatives said, you know, the vast majority, I mean, to use his term, 99.9% of what the city does would be considered charitable purposes. So they are, then there was another question. Are you converting to a private foundation? That ensued discussion about, yes, that all charities are 501(c)(3)'s. And this then gets split into private foundations and public charities. So they will be filing their 990s that I think we've become a little bit familiar with over the years. So then we moved on to conversation. There's some similarities, I think, here to how the Morals, Morals Foundation, it just is a point of reference where there's essentially a bit of a steering effort to help explain what the needs of the city might be. The foundation then decides, in this case, through the trustees of the organization. They then offer the city a gift. That gift then needs to be brought to the city council, as we now do very regularly, to be accepted, you know, or not and with or without amendment or question along the way. So we did then have a conversation about, well, how can the city, how can the city telegraph or communicate what it thinks its needs are? The mayor had been considering a couple of different pathways and the one that seemed most desirable was the concept of an ad hoc type idea where they would meet on some sort of an annual basis, most likely, create a list of priorities, provide that list to the trustees, who could then, again, decide. They are ultimately in control of what donation they make. And in this case, they are to give the funds to the city, most likely on an annual basis, but it doesn't have to be annual along the way. And they must distribute 80% of the net profits or 5% of the net asset value. There is a hope that this will grow over time as they continue to manage it. It sounded like they were more convinced that the 5% of the net asset value would be the actual distribution as opposed to the 80%, just based on how the numbers work. And then finally, you know, we did talk about the potential utilization, uses for the fund. To cut right to the chase, you know, there were some direct questions about utilization of the funds for the youth center potentially on 59 Low Street. You know, obviously it's a tough question to answer for them on the fly, but I think they made an honest effort to try and say. They're very open to that conversation. But it seemed like it was, you know, for a set period of time, you know, sort of three or four years was thrown around and then questions about whether 100% of the gift could be used to that purpose or maybe it would need to be split. So I urge you to listen to the recording. I won't try and go any further than that, but it sounded like a little bit of both. A little bit of conversation can be had, but an openness was there. So we went in the end to recommend approval of the nonjudicial settlement agreement acceptance. I will just close by saying, you know, Karis North, the city solicitor, had her hand in the agreement as well, both in reviewing it and I think making some minor revisions early on. And, you know, did see fit that the city didn't create any liability, didn't create any issue and that it was worthy of acceptance from her position and her expertise. So we were 3 to 0 to recommend approval. And Mr. President, I would just recommend a roll call.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Good recommendation. Yeah, thank you for that very comprehensive overview discussion. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I was part of the meeting. I thought it went very well. I think, I'd like to thank the trustees and the Curtis Fund in general. The work, the work that the trustees are doing in the nonjudicial settlement portion of this is to realign the trust for longevity and perpetuity. And one of the things that kind of stuck out at me and has been eating at me since the meeting was that the city didn't have a corresponding longevity and perpetuity planned for that. And so with that, I'd like to make an amendment just to the Order 582 to add the the formation of a special review committee. And I'll get into it if there's a second.
Second.
Thank you. So I'd like to propose that in appreciation and generosity to the Curtis family and acknowledge their ongoing nature of this gift, that the city council of Newburyport in collaboration with the mayor establishes as part of this acceptance a special review committee, very similar to what we did with ARPA along the way. And that committee would consist of the mayor as delegate, the city council members of chairs of budget and finance, planning and development, community services, which would have a broad reach in the community itself or their successors if we reorganize. And the committee's role is simply to review and recommend the spending of the annual gift allocations as it comes from the trustees. My thought process behind this is that it offers a level of continuity and respect to the trustees going forward. In 50 years, none of us will be here. None of us individually, but the process should remain. As we look back how others have created processes in the 70s and 80s that we're following today, I think my sole intent here is simply to put some continuity in place going forward so that in 10 years' time, we still have the right oversight and input from the city going forward back to the trustees. Thank you.
So just a point of clarification. Was there specific language?
I had specific language and I printed it out. If the chair will allow me to pass it out, I think that'd be fine. And I proposed inserting it is really at the end of the actual order from the sponsor where it says, "The category incorporated hereto and made part of." And then after that, it would say, "Furthermore, in appreciation of the generosity of the Curtis," along the lines of what I just had read off, to kind of memorialize what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, can I just have a moment to have it read to me?
Maybe the clerk can read it out, tell all of us. So she can hear.
Sure. Yeah. Much as the counselor said, it reads as follows. Furthermore, in appreciation for the generosity of the Curtis family and acknowledging the ongoing nature of this gift, the city council of Newburyport in collaboration with the mayor establishes as part of this acceptance a special review committee consisting of the mayor or his delegate and city council members, the following, chairs of budget and finance, community services and planning and development, or their successors. This committee's role is to review and recommend the spending of annual gift allocation that comes from the trustees.
Counselor Preston?
Thank you. So I had long hoped that there would be some committee that would oversee this gift on an annualized basis. I personally pictured it a little more like the CPC. But I don't, in principle, have a problem with this, although for me personally, I would, I would like to see members of the community in here somewhere as well as opposed to just counselors and a mayor and/or their delegate. But my question is, is this really for the city to do or is this for the trustees to do, to establish?
Counselor Zied and then Counselor Preston, Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, thank you. I do, I do think, you know, this is something that I know the mayor was considering, something around how to do it. And I think this is a fair proposal. This is very much for the city to do, to make. In other words, the trustees are going to be looking to the city, what do you think you could use help with? Where do you think the money could be deployed to? And in the past with other foundations, we haven't had any structure around that. So it's essentially been either executive function only or, you know, I heard that this could be something the city could use. And I think the vision here is fairly straightforward. You know, meet a couple of times and provide an outlist, a list of potential priorities or ideas. And then the trustees review them. Do they comport with the purposes of the trust? They make the recommendations. So it's not, the trustees have their work to do cut out for them, but they don't know the city. They don't know what the city needs or wants and things like that. As far as residents go, I mean, I don't have any particular objection to having, directly having residents on it. But, you know, counselors are used to committee meetings and so forth. And I think, personally, I think this becomes an annual cycle. You know, this committee meets a few times. They produce a list in, say, April or May. In the fall, the gift is made and then the following year there's execution and expenditure of the funds and then you rinse and repeat and it becomes very formulaic along the way. I don't see this as a grant, you know, grant process where you're filing a grant application with the trustees. You're just giving them guidance and saying, here are some things we've been thinking about if they meet with your liking. And then if the trustees say, hmm, you know, maybe, you know, do you have an idea? And in this sort of idea or this vein, then perhaps they could be responsive. I will just finish by saying that in the end, the council has to approve the gift. So the final conversation comes back to the council. But as with many things, I think if you can get some consensus around it before you get to that point, it's a lot healthier and easier than saying, well, we didn't have any hand in this or we didn't know how this, how this list got created or why would you recommend funds against this? So I actually think in a lot of ways it puts the trustees, takes them out of the internal crosshairs or the debate internally of what funding could or should be used for. And in the end, the council will have that say.
Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, President. So, yeah, my quick sort of suggestion or maybe even friendly amendment. I mean, I know it says the mayor or a designee, but would it make sense to ensure that we have somebody like from Ethan's office or even also the planning department? Like in addition to the mayor and/or their designee? Or, I mean, I'm just welcome to thoughts on that.
Counselor Harmon, then Counselor McCauley?
Thank you. What's before us is the approval of a nonjudicial settlement agreement, which allows the creation of a nonprofit and the addition of trustees so that we can move forward with the arrangement with the Curtis Memorial Fund, which I think we should embrace and accept. I am in support of the creation of some collaborative group to evaluate and recommend how those funds are spent. It does feel, even just based on the several folks who've weighed in so far, a bit rushed to be attaching the formation of a special review committee, the definition of which I'm unsure of, you know, on its, you know, in and of itself. And to define the members of that on the fly here as opposed to approving the nonjudicial settlement agreement entering into the lucrative and generous agreement with the Curtis Memorial Fund. And then with a little bit of time and deliberation, as it is our responsibility to do, establish what is the right balance of community representation, representation from the administration and representation from the council. So I have a hard time digesting this very quickly and attaching it to something that seems a bit unrelated in that this is to move forward with a couple of additional trustees to round out something that was established in 2013 or 2012, I believe. The original agreement was written. And to make it a nonprofit so that they, you know, this is important timing-wise so that they can disperse the funds that are now held up in a way that will not be taxed. And so I think it's to our benefit to move this forward as it's written and to take this recommendation from the Ward Five Council, which I think is a good one, with a little bit more time and care to make sure that we're not rushing that, attaching names and chairs and commitments on the fly here.
Counselor McCauley, then Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, I think I might be able to answer both, both comments at the same time. So I modeled this after ARPA. ARPA was, came out during COVID. It was free money from the federal government and the city council actually had to approve that. But there was no decision-making tree that went along with it going forward. So we did amend, make an amendment that we would create an ARPA committee to review. All they did was review the projects that were there, entertain the discussion. It was elected officials only in it. They can, elected officials can bring in staff as they need to make sure that we're, we're all in coordination and we're collaborative effort. But the idea is that we have precedent in setting up as part of our acceptance, a review process. And again, it's, it's not a rushed type of idea. It's really a message to, in this case, the trustees that we understand the gravity of this in many ways, not in a bad way, that this is in perpetuity and their dispersment of funds is coming sooner rather than later. And time in many ways is of the essence. So I know there's a timeline that goes along here, but simply the intent was to signal to the trustees that we too have a certain level of gravity here and we do have chairs that will be around in 50 years or their successors if they're moved around going forward. So I hope that answers that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue?
of separation, because it is kind of two different, I mean, it's a, some unfair comparison of this, but it is two different animals, in my mind, because this is more like a charitable foundation that's going to continuously provide. So, it, it might require a little more thoughtful, you know, discussion. This is just my thoughts and agreeance. Thank you.
Counsel Preston?
Thank you. So, I too, sort of hear both sides of this. And I, I do, I guess my first sentiment is that I think we need to take some time to be really thoughtful about what this committee looks like. But at the same token, I want to make sure that by approving this order, that we don't lose the opportunity to ensure that a committee is formed. So, perhaps we could consider an amendment to this order that stipulates that a committee needs to be formed for the review of this annual funding. But then, in a separate order, maybe even sponsored by the counselor from Ward Five, where we would have an order that defines that, and then we could take time in committee to decide what that order, or sorry, what that committee actually looks like, and really vet that through the council, so that we've sort of covered our basis that indeed, a committee has to be formed to be able to, to move forward. But at the same token, we are taking the time to really think about what that committee is, and, and make sure that we form it in the best way possible.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, just taking a quick glance at Rule Six. I won't relinquish the chair, but just to add some information, as Counsel Zied alluded to, the mayor had emailed Counsel Zied and myself around July 25th, basically had done some research through Caris North about possible ways, you know, forming some sort of entity to help decide this. And their recommendation was what, what they were calling a mayoral advisory ad hoc. Doesn't have to be that way. And this, this, you know, you know, the mayor's idea was including city council, councilors, a representative of the school committee, finance director, director of public services, and, and, so again, it would basically be a balance between council and administration, with a school committee person in there, have the mayor select a member of the community, have the city council president select a member of the community. This was in an email. Counsel Zied gave, gave his thoughts on that. And then the mayor said, you know, they'd be looking to put an order through sooner, and I'd be willing to work with Counsel McCauley on putting something forward. So, I, you know, I think that is the intent of the administration. Andrew Levine can state otherwise if that's not the case. But that is what the administration's thinking. And that kind of ties in with the content of what Counsel McCauley is saying, if not, certainly the timing's different. So, sort of my point of information, question is, if we modify this order, does that throw legally, you know, the order seems, maybe we wrote it, maybe wrote it with Caris's input, you know, do, do we throw off just approving the nonjudicial settlement if we start tinkering with the wording of the order? And I know we don't have an attorney on hand, I don't believe. So, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that. Counsel Wright?
Yeah. Thank you, Counsel President. I think that, that a committee is in order. I think we, as a council, can, can, can create an ordinance at any time to create an advisory committee, or instruct the administration to create one. I am concerned that, that adding additional language to this agreement would then create a whole new legal review cycle process. And I think, I don't, I don't think there's anything that will really benefit from in, in, in adding this language and going through the, the legal review process again, and then, and then reevaluating it going forward. But I, I'm a strong supporter of, of the, of the intent of, of the amendment. I, I do think that clarity and transparency is really what we're after, all of us together. And if we can codify it in one way or another, so that it survives us as individuals and survives us as a body, I'd be fully supportive of that.
Further discussion? Counsel Zied?
Yeah, thank you. Just two things. One is, you know, a lot, a lot of the last three or four years has been, been a lot of talk about the time the council spends on things. And this is one of those cases where I really think we should be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. This is an advisory to provide the trustees guidance on what we think might basically pass the city council in terms of accepting a gift. That's number one. And so, I don't think it's personally overly controversial. I don't think even the makeup is overly controversial. If the committee was going to have power itself to make decisions, that would be a very different story. I think it's clever to try and make it a, you know, contingent upon in the future creating committee, but I do think that's unfortunately a bit legally challenging to say, okay, because what if that doesn't form, and what if it forms, but it's not the right thing, et cetera, in terms of the acceptance. So, I thought this would be something simple to, to move it forward. Final thing I would just say is, we have been confronting this, I would say, in several issues and several matters in the last few months, which is the role of the city council, the role of the executive branch, and the division and separation between the two. And it's not getting any clearer. And for councilors who are newer, I just want to tell you that the city council is its own body. We are our own branch. So, this, the idea of being collaborative is always a good idea and welcome. But there are also times when the legislative branch does things, and the executive branch does things, and they may not always agree or be swimming and rowing in the same direction, and that's okay. And so, if we do kick this off to another order, which it sounds like we will, then I would respectfully submit that, you know, there should be a city council effort on some of this stuff, and not everything being, you know, hey, we advise the mayor. We are a branch of government with actual equal powers in many ways, certainly a check and balance. That's your basic civics, and that's in the charter. So, it does seem like we'll punt it off. I, I don't know what the sponsor of the amendment wants to do, but I'll yield to him.
Counsel Preston?
Sorry. Just, I would like to hear from the Chief of Staff on this, because I, frankly, I do agree. You know, I, I heard some concerning language in a committee meeting last week about, you know, that the mayor was elected to make decisions. And I feel strongly that I was elected to make decisions as well. And so, I do very much agree with the sentiment of the fact that, you know, this should not be something, I appreciate the mayor's email to you, and his, you know, willingness to form a committee. But I would really like to see this be something that is formed by the council and not by the mayor. And so, I guess what I'm really looking for from the Chief of Staff is sort of a commitment from the administration to do that. Thank you.
So, I would just say that certainly, it's the city council's responsibility to be accepting any of these gifts that come in. So, that would be, without question, we're definitely bite the apple when it comes to that acceptance piece. So, if you're concerned about it being accepted now, when will be time to create a mechanism in the future for some kind of order? I think that's a very clear point, when you'll definitely be able to have a deadline in place for when you want some kind of other order or other mechanism created, if that makes sense. So, this isn't the only chance tonight to create that. That's just, that's the first point. The mayor put together a memo that had a number of different structures that could potentially work. And the memo did say that the council could certainly pass some kind of order or ordinance that would institutionalize that kind of process. So, we definitely recognize the responsibility and role and the power of the council, and understand that, that they have the ability to codify that in a way that the, the mayor doesn't on his own. So, we are, we are bought into having some kind of structure that will allow us to work together to come up with a, a system that will set us up each year for the council to be able to accept the gifts of the Curtis trustees. So, does that answer your question?
I believe so.
And I apologize for the laryngitis.
Okay. Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, so, first of all, I wasn't privy to the memo, so I'm, I'm, I'm flying at this blind. And as I had said at the beginning, it kind of stuck at me all week, in that the city isn't living up to its obligations, in my opinion, in perpetuity, as the fund is. But I'll, I'll say a couple other things here, is that, you know, there was some discussion with the trustees, the adding trustees, and their answer was, less is more. And as we talk about an ad hoc committee that now grows from four to nine, we all of a sudden get more is less. So, we have competing ideas. We have, this is not CPC. They're not going to make a series of recommendations, and we evaluate them. We're not going to take recommendations from others. These are city needs that need to be addressed, or could be addressed, in the discussions with the trustees. Trustees were number two. And, and, you know, we outnumber them nine to two, potentially, in a discussion. You know, again, it is within our right to be able to establish an ad hoc. It is the will of the council how they want to set that up or establish it. I was offering a framework going forward as to how we could go about doing that. We could tie it right in. We could accelerate the program. And the, and the changes to the order itself, the actual language to the order itself, not in the other appendices, and should have no bearing itself on the actual language and acceptance of the, of the terms and conditions of the nonjudicial settlement. So, you know, I'm not sure if anyone else has anything to add to that.
Counsel Lane?
Would it make sense to open this up a little bit, and just say, consisting at a minimum of the mayor, his delegate, council members, that way, you know, I don't see where there's a, I don't see where there's a lot of heartburn here. I mean, this is just a committee, just to see where the money, which is a gift that's coming in, is going to be spent. But I think it makes a lot of sense to have the, the people named on that committee, at a minimum. If you want to add extra people to it down the road, great, but at least you have, that there's going to be a committee formed. I don't see how this would legally interrupt anything of this order here. I think it's, I mean, I support it. I don't see any harm in it. Oversight's always a good thing. So, I'm just wondering if there's folks with some hesitation on it, if there was more language, just saying, at a minimum of, or adding the potential to add more people to this committee.
Counsel Wright?
Yeah. So, so, thank you for, for bringing that up, and thank you for my counsel from Ward Five. Now that I understand that it's part of our ordinance, and it doesn't touch the underlying documents, I have no concern about those documents changing or having to be re-reviewed for legalities. So, so, I, I, I would, I would recommend that we all consider the amendment just on the face, on face value, knowing that it's not going to change the underlying documents. So, so, give this, give this amendment consideration. I think there might be some, some, some language changes that might be appropriate, especially in the last sentence. It's, I think that's a little confusing to me as to what the intent is. I don't think it clearly demonstrates the intent. I think the intent is to, for the, for this group, to both recommend items that the city would like to see the charitable fund provide funding for, and then, and then be responsible, be charged for making sure that those recommendations are implemented. I don't think that is, is clearly understood in that last sentence. So, maybe some wordsmithing there would be appropriate to really identify what the role of the, of the committee is going to be.
Counsel Harmon?
Thank you. I'll just go back to something the at-large counselor said earlier on in the discussion. I, and thank you to the other at-large counselor for helping to clarify on the legality. If it is the will of the council to attach the creation of a committee, then I think we should do that without assigning the membership of that committee. I think that is consistent with how we created the ARPA committee. In my short tenure on the council, I had the pleasure of serving on the ARPA committee, where I think we approved over a million dollars this year. The CPC does multiple millions of dollars worth of allocations or recommendations on an annual, on an annual basis. And I think, just to bring it to, into some context, what we're talking about here is hundreds of thousands of dollars, generous and useful, hundreds of thousands of dollars. We are not talking about the distribution of millions of dollars every year. So, the import and, you know, critical nature of this body may, may be getting conflated a little bit with some of those other groups that exist. But if, if we are going to create that, I would be happy to compromise on something that strikes the membership, establishes that we will create the committee, as risky as that may be, I think we'll be capable of accomplishing that, and receiving the funds in a way that gets us out of some of this wordsmithing on the fly. That committee can then create more of their own language around, or, you know, norms around making recommendations, receiving recommendations, because it is the trustees' intention, based on my hearing of them, to, you know, have some influence over the funds that are coming in. And so, I think we need to be in a, in a partnership with, with the trust. And just to correct, I think the, my recollection is that they're, they will have three trustees. They have one now. They're adding two additional. So, it would be three.
Counsel Shan?
All right. Since we're doing this ad hoc on the fly here, maybe we can do, as a compromise with everybody, how about a special review committee to review and recommend the annual gift allocation, period. And then we'll go from there as far as creating the committee from there. That was my recommendation.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I was essentially going to suggest exact same thing. The only thing I would add to that is, so, establishes as a part of the acceptance, a special review committee by order of the city council. This committee's role is to review, recommend spending. So, I would add that it's by order of the city council.
Clerk, do you want to read what you think has been said?
I'm sorry, mark mine up if you want to hear it.
Please do.
So, after, in collaboration with the mayor, establishes as part of this acceptance, a special review committee by order of the city council. This committee's role is to review, recommend spending. So, I would add that it's by order of the city council.
Clerk, do you want to read what you think has been said?
I'm sorry, mark mine up if you want to hear it.
Please do.
So, after, in collaboration with the mayor, establishes as part of this acceptance, a special review committee by order of the city council. Period. This committee's role is to review and recommend the spending of an annual gift allocation that comes from the trustees. And then, of course, council would then approve that gift. So, I think to the other at-large counselor's concern, you know, we, we, it establishes what this committee is doing, but then the council approves the gift.
If I might mispronounce. So, essentially, Counsel, we're striking the words, consisting of the mayor, his delegate, city council members, chairs of budget and finance, community services, and planning and development, all their successors.
Yes.
So, it's going to read?
And then adding, by order of the city council.
A special review committee by order of the city council to review and recommend the spending of annual gift allocation that comes from the trustees, period.
That works.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I'd just like to dovetail off that, if I can, is that, you know, I'd be okay with a special review committee by order. But I will throw out here for thought, consisting of the mayor, three city councilors, and two members of the public, and just leave it at that, going forward. In that way, we have a foundation of six people that, and, consistent with the mayor's language, that one, members of the public, one appointed by the mayor, one appointed by the city council, and, and then continue on, instead of naming the chairs, which, which is what we did in, in ARPA.
Counsel McCauley, can you just state again what you, what you're changing the membership to?
Sure. I would, so, consistent with, consistently, consistent with what Counsel Preston had just read off, and the clerk had read off, I would add, special review committee by order of the city council. But I'd also add, consisting of the mayor, three city councilors, and two members of the public, one appointed by the mayor, one appointed by city council. And then continuing on.
Counsel Preston?
I'm okay either way. I'm just suggesting.
I just feel like, I personally would prefer that we left it, and then establish that in an order, and then we can deliberate who is on the committee, when the order comes in front of us, to develop the, the committee. But again, by saying that it's by order of a city council, you know, it, it gives us that option. a city council, you know, it gives us that opportunity to really deliberate through that.
Counselor Lane?
I just don't know what the heartburn is here, to be honest with you, I mean, we're creating oversight for a fund that's coming in, and I just, I don't, I don't really know the Game of Thrones backstory as to why we're kind of blocking at the committee, or, I mean, we have to remember that this is in perpetuity, so it's going to outlive all of us. This is not about personalities, or people, or who's good, what in their mind, or where they want this money to go. We're all going to be gone someday, so we're setting precedent, right now, for people that we don't even know. So as much as we have people in mind, and who's the players, and who's involved, keep in mind that this is, it's all going to change someday, so set it up the right way with oversight, because you don't know who's going to be filling your seat at some point.
All right, so Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I just want to say that, in light of the discussion that went on, I will withdraw my Second Amendment of adding the mayor, three city counselors, et cetera, and leave it to the by order of city council.
So we're back to counsel...
Would that be a friendly acceptance of that amendment?
Yes.
And are you okay with the second? So if I might, Ms. President, I think you were at, is it would read that, a special review committee is established by order of the city council to review and recommend the spending of the annual gift allocation that comes from the trustees. So we're essentially striking from the word, consisting of, all the way to this committee's role.
And adding by order of the council?
Yes. And adding by order of the city council.
Just a point of information, so who's going to be on this committee is then decided some future date?
Yes.
By the order of the city council.
By order of the city council. Perfect. So I think that's the amendment on the floor, Ms. President.
Okay, so that's the amendment, again, added onto the original order. Any further discussion? So vote on the amendment, we'll do a roll call, obviously.
Yes, I will. So, shall I?
Please.
Okay, this is on the motion to amend, as said by Counselor Preston and yours truly. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
So...
No.
So the order as amended?
Order as amended. Roll call. The order as amended, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
So...
No.
So the order as amended?
Order as amended. Roll call. The order as amended, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
So...
No.
So the order as amended?
Order as amended. Roll call. The order as amended, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
So...
No.
So the order as amended?
Order as amended. Roll call. The order as amended, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
So...
No.
So the order as amended?
Order as amended. Roll call. The order as amended, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
So...
No.
So the order as amended?
Order as amended. Roll call. The order as amended, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
So...
No.
So the order as amended?
Order as amended. Roll call. The order as amended, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
So...
No.
So the order as amended?
Order as amended. Roll call. The order as amended, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor President?
No.
Counselor Harmon?
Just as it stated in the memo, it says, the existing roof, based on observations of consultants, appears to have several more years of useful life left, so they don't specify a range.
Thank you.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so in this particular item, I was here early, I was chatting with the architect who wasn't necessarily on, as part of the meeting, we were just chatting about the roof, he talked about the construction materials that were there, again, it's an awkward position to put anyone in, to guesstimate, you know, what could and couldn't happen there, he seemed confident that the current construction would hold, there's...
Not huge amounts per se, but there are expected to be a few more donations in the coming years, probably somewhere around the same amount, to give you an idea. We asked if there was any specific plan on behalf of the library as to how they might deploy these funds. As it states, the purpose is general library purposes, so it will be something library-related, but there wasn't a specific, you know, direction yet as to how that might be spent. You know, it's not, we did talk about this a little bit, doesn't, we asked if that's common, not to have a directed, specifically directed donation, and as we, I think we know too, from our own experience in gifts now, you come, just, you know, it's a flip of the coin, it comes and it goes. So it was a $4,000 gift, and the committee recommended that we accept it gratefully with a vote of three to zero.
Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. So I was one of the ones, I don't know if the only one, a little bit perplexed by the lack of specificity in this gift acceptance. I think gift acceptance process is relatively new, and I think is a good one, and it is an opportunity for department heads to fill in a little bit more detail, even if it's a general purpose donation. The fact that we're receiving the gift acceptance to approve, I think, is an opportunity for us to evaluate where those monies are going, as we also continue to be in the CIP process around things, the needs for the library in this case. It'd be really helpful to have some allocation or some idea, I'm looking at the administration on that, so I'm just restating that with you in the room, that in the future, a department head, I would expect to be able to at least provide some guidance as to where the money's going, so that we can look at other monies that are being requested of the council for the same department, and look at those side by side, and understand, is this something that we no longer need to allocate funds for an HVAC, or a roof, or a ceiling, or is this something net new that the library's gonna do with those funds? So, I will support it, but I would like in the future to have a little bit more clarity.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no.
I'll just close by stating that on the same night at our committee meeting, we did get into a discussion about the Newburyport Youth Services Dead Exclusion Order, which has been in committee for quite some time, that is not coming out tonight. Expect that conversation to continue. We are going to pick back up on Thursday with our regularly scheduled, we will have Thursday's meeting, and so at that meeting, it really is dedicated to Order 586, the CIP order. I know that some counselors can't make it, I can certainly appreciate it's the middle of summer. At the same time, the show must go on, so we will continue, it's been in committee for a little bit. Whether it goes to another meeting or not, I can't say at this point. It is really the only substantive matter that's planned to be discussed on Thursday, so I do think there's a good chance it will come out, but that's, again, the really, the role of how the conversation goes. And then, we will pick back up on the parking rates, we had put that on a little bit of a pause, we were waiting for some amendments to come through. So we won't pick that up on Thursday, but I would expect that to be at our next meeting, and then we'll be right into the fall, and we'll get back in the tax rate setting, and all the tasks that come from there, and that's it for budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Zied. Next would be Community Services. Counsel Preston?
Motion to approve Appointment 495?
Second.
Thank you. So Appointment 495 is for Jeanette Isabella as a reappointment to the Emma Andrews Library. This reappointment has actually been in committee for some time, since early June, and unfortunately, at our last committee meeting, Ms. Isabella also had to cancel at the very last second and wasn't able to attend the meeting. However, the committee felt strongly that we know Ms. Isabella quite well, she's familiar for certain to the council as a whole, since this is a reappointment to the Emma Andrews, she has been a member for many, many years, in very good standing, and so, we voted three to zero to approve this appointment.
Okay. Any discussion? We would do a roll call, second reading, appointment?
On Appointment 495, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Duneau?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to receive and file Communication 565.
Second.
Thank you. So Communication 565 is an energy analysis report from EGA Architects for the project at 59 Low Street. Per our ordinance, an energy analysis must, a report must be presented to the Energy Advisory Committee to review options for energy efficiency in net zero goals. As a renovation, the project at 59 Low Street is not required to fully met net zero, but it is, the goal is to come as close as possible to that. The report is lengthy, and goes through a lot of different measures of energy efficiency in the building, but in the end, it recommends what is in the report as Scenario 2, which includes super insulation with spray foam insulation inside the building, as well as solar panel readiness on the modular gym portion of the building only, not the existing or main building, so it would be the newly planned modular gym, not on the existing building, which would give us an energy efficiency of 65.91 percent. Certainly myself, as someone who sits on the Resiliency Committee, would like to see the city stretched to higher efficiency, but the trade-off, of course, is cost. Scenario 3 does include solar panels on the roof of the existing building that's there today, which would save the city about $1,763 per year in utility costs. However, the roof that is on that building today, they feel relatively confident that it is still viable for several years, but if we were to put solar panels on that roof, we would have to remove the roof today at a cost of about $160,000. And so, you know, given the trade-off there, oh, and I should also mention, so the, again, the roof on the existing building, portions of it not only face in the wrong direction, facing north, but they also are shaded by trees on a neighboring property, so they're not, in many places, it's not an ideal place for solar panels either. However, there are portions of the roof that would be ideal, so that in the future, if we were, well, when we were to replace the roof on the existing building, we could and should consider solar panels on the affected areas of that roof at that time. Also, the cost estimates that we have seen for the project previously only include the costs associated with making the building solar-ready, and what that means is including the hookups for the panels, but not the addition of the panels themselves to either the modular roof or the existing building. So we will have to look into, in the future, when we want to do this, the, how we want to go about adding those solar panels to the modular roof, in that, there are, I should say that Don Walters was with us from the Energy Advisory Committee, and he explained to us that they have looked at this, and they agree with the recommendation for Scenario 2, as it exists in the report. But also, there was some conversation about the fact that you can work with contractors, where the contractor would absorb the cost of the addition of the solar panels to the roof, there would be different costs, well, costs associated with how we would gain the utilities, and cost for the utilities, and those sorts of things. But, again, the roof will be made solar-ready, so that you could just hook up the panels. The committee voted three to zero to receive and file this communication.
Great. Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Zied?
I just have a question. So, the existing roof on the existing building, viable for some more years, how many more years do you think the roof is good for?
Wish I had the tape to roll today. I'm left with the impression that sort of five to seven, but I would need to look back to be absolutely certain of that, unless the Chief of Staff knows for sure.
Yeah, that was a question that we had as well. I think that five to seven's not a bad range to put down as a viability time horizon for that.
Counsel Harmon?
Just as it stated in the memo, it says, "The existing roof, based on observations of consultants, appears to have several more years of useful life left," so they don't specify a range.
Thank you.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, so in this particular item, I was here earlier, I was chatting with the architect who wasn't necessarily on, as part of the meeting, we were just chatting about the roof, he talked about the construction materials that were there. Again, it's an awkward position to put anyone in, to guesstimate, you know, what could and couldn't happen there. He seemed confident that the current construction would hold, there's insulation, encapsulation underneath, encapsulation on the top, so by hook or by crook, several, might be more than five, but it still has structural integrity issues and things like that, that may happen, so it's tough to put a name on it, a number on it, as well, and I think we should be fair to everyone trying to guesstimate what that type of situation is.
Thank you.
Just to follow up?
Counsel Zied, yeah?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a question about the exact number of years, I'm just trying to, if a resident asks me, okay, you're gonna spend X dollars on this project, you're saying you need to do another substantive project within 10 years, if I'm being generous, and maybe as few as three, I usually think of several as three. And the other follow-up question I have is, encapsulated from what? That roof? Do you know the answer to that?
Yeah, there's asbestos on the inside, and there's asbestos on the inside that is part of the original plan to be encapsulated, and then on the outside, there's like lucite board or something like that, that is kind of brittle and porous, and by covering that up, they should be able to extend its life.
One last question. So, I understand from the chair's report, and my understanding too, from the original ordinance, get as close to net zero as possible, so if net zero's 100 percent, what is Scenario 2? 50 percent? 75 percent?
Scenario 2 is 65.91 percent energy efficiency.
Thank you. Counsel Harmon, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Counsel Lane?
Don't we have, am I mistaken, did we pass, we have to have net zero on all new buildings that we, so is there, didn't we, somebody want to clarify that for me?
I have Counsel Shan, and then Counsel Preston.
Couple of years ago.
We did, but we also put in that, I think Council President, we did, but we also put in there, we needed to have a reason if we didn't think it was economically viable. So, as long as they gave us the report stating it, we could make the decision whether we would go 100 percent or not.
Thank you. I wasn't sure.
Okay. Further discussion? Motion to receive and file, that would be, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. Okay, thank you.
All right. Order to approve Order 590 as amended.
Second.
Let's explain the amendment. All right, thank you. So, Order 590 is a license agreement between the city and the Pioneer League for Lower Atkinson Commons/Pioneer Fields. This agreement has frankly been a very long time coming. Pioneer League has been a very good partner to the city for many years, has done a lot of work to maintain the fields. However, over time, there has never been a very clear understanding between the city and the Pioneer League, which has led to frustration and friction, frankly, on both sides. This agreement was modeled after the agreement that's in place today for the Cherry Hill Soccer Fields, and it does include a map of Lower Atkinson Commons, so that it, you know, puts a fine point on defining the areas that are in the agreement, that are the responsibility of the city and the responsibility of the Pioneer League, but also at the same time is very clear that the property is owned by the city of Newburyport and not the Pioneer League at all times. The term of the agreement is 20 years, and it has been reviewed and approved by the Parks Commission. There was discussion of whether the agreement would be nullified if the Parks, the Pioneer League, excuse me, were to exhibit discrimination. The agreement does stipulate that the Pioneer League must comply with laws and statutes which should cover, should cover discrimination, but there was follow-up, Special Projects Manager Turner agreed to do follow-up with the city solicitor to be certain on that, and that follow-up that was post the meeting from Karis North confirms that the existing language does cover discrimination. We also, the bulk of the discussion that we had in committee was around whether or not the Parks Commission has authority to be a signatory to the agreement. Per our charter, the Parks Commission does have limited authority, and we had had feedback from Ms. North that if the Parks Commission is not a signatory, it does not affect the legality of the agreement. However, some felt that this was still open to interpretation, and wanted to have some feedback from the Parks Commission. We did have Parks Chair, or Parks Commission Chair Ted Beretti there, he joined us and said that he feels that the responsibilities of the Parks Commission remain the same, whether they're a signatory or not, but just wanted to be very certain that the Pioneer League is clear that if they wanted to create changes to the park, that it's really, that the Parks Commission is really the body that they should be dealing with, regardless of whether or not they're a signatory. And we had discussion about the fact that our charter is very clear that the Parks Commission is the appropriate body for the Pioneer League to follow up with, and that wouldn't change if the Parks Commission is a signatory or not. There was a discussion of precedence about whether or not in the Cherry Hill Agreement, the Parks Commission was a signatory on that. Again, nobody knew the answer in the room, Special Projects Manager Turner committed to researching that, and the follow-up to that was that the Parks Commission is indeed a signatory on the Cherry Hill Agreement. So, you know, we did get, again, I want to be very clear, that we got feedback from Karis North that, you know, she sort of felt like this could go either way, but that at the end of the day, it did not in any way change the legalities of the document, the document would still be very much in effect if we were to take the Parks Commission off as a signatory. So we did actually vote to amend, to remove the Parks Commission as a signatory, and that amendment passed two to one, and then we did pass the, or we recommended the approval of the Order 590 as amended, contingent on a feedback about discrimination, which, again, I've already let you know that Karis North agreed that the wording in the agreement as it exists today covers that. But I will say, I'll stop for a comment, but if we do agree to move forward with it as amended, to remove the Parks Commission as a signatory, we do have to further amend the agreement a bit to take the Parks Commission out of the first paragraph of the agreement, as well as in the order.
Okay, that's the beginning of discussion. Counsel Zied?
Yeah, I was a sponsor of this, I spent a good amount of time, probably on five or six revisions, with the Special Projects Manager, who was sort of the go-between, between the different parties. First thing is, I think overall, the agreement's fair. I think to the chair's point, the whole heart of this was to finally, once and for all, define the relationship, and the responsibilities, and frankly, where the cost was gonna come from, and I think this is a reasonably fair agreement to both parties. Obviously, the Pioneer League is not a for-profit organization anyways, and so, and they do a lot to care for the fields, they use the fields, and the city obviously remains the fee owner, there's no question about that, and that, you know, as you see in the agreement, there's a differentiation between the responsibilities. So I think it's very fair in that respect. Actually, the termination clause area is always an area of conversation, and I think we went back and forth on that, and landed on a decent spot where the city does have revocability rights as a license, so if there is a concern over anything, that there is an opportunity for adjudication of that, and then we, you'll notice that it requires the mayor to let the council know, for example, that it's been revoked, and so that was something that was important to me. In terms of the Parks Commission, you know, we have, I think, I hope, a great deal of respect for all the commissions and boards that we have, but there are some things that are really the role of frankly, the legislative body, and/or the executive body, who are both acting together in concert, consistent with the charter, and I think this is one of those. I know I've mentioned the fee schedule, for example, for the parks in the past, but that's something that took many months to put together, and it really was something they need to go through the council, and I think we should be mindful of frankly, putting commissions in positions where they're trying to execute legal agreements and things like that. It's not really the right fit, in my opinion, and from a legal perspective, and again, this is with all due respect, the Parks Commission is subordinate to the city council, it was created by the city council, it was endowed with certain powers by the city council, not by the charter. That's an important distinction, is the Parks Commission doesn't exist in the city charter, the Parks Commission exists in ordinance, and that's because the city council created the Parks Commission, and so if you have any logical heartburn over it, just think that the council could just change the ordinance if it wants to, and the council can obviously change ordinance without frankly, the legal input of the Parks Commission. So it's an illogical thing to think that, you know, you can't not have them sign this, and that it's not okay. From a practical perspective, the Parks Commission's super important, obviously, we created them, the council created that body for a reason, and so they would absolutely, to me, there's no question legally or practically, they would be the right body to go to for modifications to, and things along those lines in the Pioneer League. So in the end, I think it's a fair agreement for both parties, finally puts this one to bed, I think puts it on par. Interestingly, the Cherry Hill was mentioned, I'm not sure, and I wasn't here, but I'm not sure the Cherry Hill one ever went through the council, so, you know, you kind of can flip the coin and go to the other side and say, did that make any sense at the time? So I do hope that you'll support it, I think, you know, with the amendment, even if it gives you a little heartburn, I don't think it's anything that materially changes anything, but also I think it's logically and legally consistent with the council, and that if there's anything ever wrong with this agreement, that should land on the city council. That's our job, and that's not something we should give off to commissioners who are just trying to help. Thank you.
Counsel Harmon?
Thank you. Just briefly, I think this is a great step in the right direction, as the Ward 4 counselor, where Atkinson is located, it's been a long time coming, Pioneer League has continued to be a good partner, but having some more parameters around the relationship will be positive, and I just want to extend my thanks to the Ward 1 counselor for his help shaping this. Amended as it is, I support it as it was, I support it, I'd like to move this forward.
Thank you. Counsel Zied?
And I just forgot, I'm happy to make the amendment to effectuate that, I didn't write down all this stuff, but I think the idea is, the Parks Commission is threaded here and there throughout the document, and so what I think the chair is stating is that, so I think if the council could see fit to give the clerk just the opportunity to make those edits to essentially strike where it says Parks Commission, unless there's a need to actually go page by page and do it.
If I might, so, what the amendment really is, is you're talking about the signatories, which is the mayor's city council and the league.
But there are also a few mentions in the doc, within.
What the Parks Commission would be struck as a signatory.
Yeah.
And then, a quick reading, it looks like on Exhibit D, nothing's gonna happen without prior written approval of the city's Parks Commission, is that to stay or go?
I think that's to stay.
Yeah, in my opinion, that's to stay.
See, it's really just removing them as a party to the agreement.
I don't see where they are.
Yeah, I don't see them.
I can actually speak to that. So in the order itself, in the second line?
The order and.
It says, "The mayor of the city of Newburyport and the Parks Commission of the city of Newburyport." So we would get rid of the "and" and the Parks Commission of the city of Newburyport, and then in, my mouse just died, come on. Sorry.
The last page with the signatories?
Now, it would be, get rid of the signatories, yeah, and then, on the very first page of the license agreement, under A, it says, "In between the city of Newburyport, acting by and through its Parks Commission."
Got it. Okay. So those would be the. And so, D would remain unchanged?
Yes.
And we'll. Think it's as straightforward as that.
We'll double check just to make sure. Okay, so that amendment has been made and accepted as a friendly, Counsel Lane, and then perhaps Counsel Harmon?
Yeah.
Oh, he didn't need it.
I've got some issues. Not just in life, but here. All right, so knowing the history of the Pioneer League in the city, I get where this is going, I understand it. I got, number one, use, purpose, and term and assignment, we're telling them that they are lessie, but they're responsible for every piece of maintenance, upkeep, for fields, those, to backtrack a couple weeks ago, those fields, two of them aren't even viable baseball fields, for what the age, for the ages of the kids. Two of them don't have mounds, there's flooding on one of the fields, there's a lot of problems. We've spent a lot of money in the safety of fields that aren't even viable, so when I see that it's gonna now go back to the Pioneer League for fencing, lighting, building, toilets, everything that, I mean, I don't understand how that's all going to them, we're entering this agreement with them and giving them subpar facility, in my mind. Give me one minute. And also, I mean, not post any signage, so it's Pepe Field, it's Hawks Field, there's things down there that are in place, so now all of a sudden, is that going to erase Pepe Field or Hawks Field? I know people say no, but I've seen baseball fields disappear across the city for two decades. The Brezner Hand took out three fields, the Knock Field, which was supposed to be a replacement, was halfway by an illegal taking of the hill, and it really isn't a viable baseball field. We've got 8,000 soccer fields, but we've got three baseball fields, two of them aren't even viable. Cashman Park floods, Perkins Park floods, so I'm having a lot of trouble with this, reading this, saying, okay, we're dumping this all on you Pioneer League, you take all the expenses, you do all the maintenance, you're a not-profit, where are they gonna get the money from? Or are we gonna help them with this, and give them viable fields up front to start, rather than giving them the mish-mash that's down there? That's my big problem with this. So if anybody wants to lend a.
I think Counsel Harmon's first.
Counsel Harmon?
Thank you. Understand the concerns. I just add a little bit of information from my perspective. The Lower Atkinson project that's underway now is in part to create a safer environment for the kids and families that use the park, but is also very largely centered around improving drainage in that site, because of the issues that have been experienced, so that should be alleviated to some extent through the project that's underway now. My understanding, because President of the Pioneer League is also a Ward 4 resident, in past conversations, is that this memorializes essentially the relationship with some, you know, greater specificity here and there that we have had with the Pioneer League, they use the fields, they are responsible for the upkeep of the field, so that they can hold their games when they need to. In terms of the signage, I believe that's more protection for additional signage that may be proposed. You could imagine Fenway Park in Lower Atkinson, and we would want to have some say over what, you know, banners and things go up above and beyond that. I would not be supportive of removing the history of the names of those fields, and I can't imagine that Pioneer League or the Parks Commission would either. All that being said, I'll defer to the administration if you have any additional information, but my reading of this is that we're not making any, we're not pushing anybody around on either side, we're just getting something in place that can guide and govern the relationship going forward.
Counsel McCauley, and then Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I just want to add some color. The Pioneer League had agreed to these terms, these are the terms that they're actually working under, under no agreement right now in terms of that. We also are giving them a, you know, dollar per year lease amendment, so we're not charging them $100,000 to give them A1-type of facilities that went along there. There's always some sort of balance that has to happen, there are other avenues to improving the park, like CPA funds and things like that, that can be applied for, through recommendation of the Parks Commission, et cetera, along the way. Those are things that I think now, because we have an agreement, if there's agreements or something with the lessie, they can now go to the Parks Commission, ask for improvement along the way, and there's a process by which, you know, there's a structure and guidelines that go along there, and we can help them improve that facilities if they so need that help, right, going on. So, that's how I would take it away, take away this document.
Now Counsel Preston?
Very quickly, Counsel from Ward 5 said a lot of what I was going to say. I think it is very important to stress here that the Pioneer League first sat down with the Parks Manager and went through everything as they tried to develop this agreement, and this is what was worked out with the Parks Manager, and then the Pioneer League worked with the Parks Commission on development of this agreement, and the Special Projects Manager to develop this agreement. So the Pioneer League itself is very much in agreement with the agreement as it stands today. And then, lastly, is just the piece around, you know, could they get rid of a field? Any sort of substantive change like that would have to have the agreement of the Parks Commission, and that's clearly stated here. So, they couldn't just remove a field and have not any sort of input from the city.
Counsel Wright?
Yeah, I think that, if lack any agreement, both parties have compromised and have reached agreement, and we're just here to codify it and approve it. So I think that, you know, the Pioneer League body has, is going to sign this document the way that it's written, and it's been decided from them as a body that they're in support of this. If they weren't, they wouldn't sign it, so I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
Counsel Zied?
Yeah, I just have two quick things, three quick things, say, one is, yeah, this defines as anything. One is, yeah, this defines, as anything does, our obligation. It doesn't mean we can't expend more if we want to, and if that's the will of the city through our normal power structures, the Ward Four Counsel mentioned. But we're literally in the process of spending north of a million dollars in the last three years or so on that area, between the new playground, the demolition of the existing, and now the addition, which if you've driven by, has recently occurred, and the addition of the new parking. So there's no inhibition, there's no prohibition on spending more, but I don't think we would want to create an obligation to spend more. That has to be run through a number of different avenues and priorities and all those things. So that's number one. Number two is, one thing that actually was back and forth in some of the revisions was the providing of electricity and water, which if you'll note, the city is providing electricity for the fieldhouse and the lights, as well as water for the irrigation system. And I do think those have some decent value to them, especially if you've received your water bill recently, and you can imagine what it might cost to keep fields green like that. So I think that's another potential nice thing by the city to do. And then last thing was, I do think this is actually better than the status quo. If you recall, five years ago, for those who were on the council, I mean, there was actually friction about, you know, you should be doing this, and you should be doing that, and that actually was going both ways. And it actually was frustrating and unhealthy for both parties, I think. So I think this gives a lot of clarity. It's actually, you know, yes, in some ways, this has become what de facto has been done over the last several years, but that's absent the friction that I think some of us are familiar with, just having heard about it. Oops.
What? In the hallway.
Oh. Oh, my gosh. What's going on?
Maybe you could contact somebody to deal with it. There's somebody in the hallway who's kind of doing something.
Who is sitting here.
I didn't text you that to close the door. I texted you so you'd go out quietly.
Is it okay if I use this phone?
I don't care what you do. I just, I didn't want to cause a commotion, which apparently I did. I know I'm not supposed to text during meetings, but-
I think it's a good time for me to yield, so I'll do that.
Counsel really getting into it. So the only question is, where's Robin?
I do yield.
I mainly had Jane's safety in mind, so.
A bat.
It was going to be a continued distraction, so I think. Okay, so thank you, Counsel Zede, on that. Any further discussion on the Pioneer League amendment? Counsel Lane?
Yeah, that's just all my, that's, I've got a lot of, I don't know, sentiment around Pioneer League. I played there, I grew up there. I just have never, it's always been a very gray area with Mike Barry, who had a lot invested in the Pioneer League way back when. I still don't know if that deed is clean on the land, because I've heard multiple times way back when that he owned a piece of that. So I don't, I don't know if it's been thoroughly vetted out or whatever, but my main concern is the field conditions. If we're going to spend millions of dollars making it safe, what are you making it safe for? I mean, kids need to play baseball in the right way. I mean, there's no, there's no two ways about it. I guess that's my plea to the city and the administration, is to make the fields viable. If you're going to spend all the money to make it safe and everything else, just make the fields viable and spend some money on the actual field conditions around town. So asking that is the last sport to receive attention in the city.
All right, thank you. If no further discussion, I think we'll do a roll call on this, since it's a license agreement, probably not a bad idea. If the clerk could call?
Well, approval as amended, and the amendments have been spoken about, we're striking the Parks Commission as a signatory, and in two places, one in the order and one in the first sentence, if you will, of Exhibit A, and then we're going to keep Exhibit D's reference. That's going to remain unchanged. So having said that, Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Dunio?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
And Counsel Kim?
Yes. Okay, thanks to those who worked on that, the committee, Counsel Zede?
All right, so that's it for community services. Since we have a clear docket, we will be canceling our August 19 meeting, and we'll see where we find ourselves at the next meeting, if we have anything on our docket.
Great, thank you, thank you so much. General Government, nothing to report, still working on getting an investigator set up to take care of that. License and permits?
Thank you, Counsel President. I make a motion to approve application 223.
Second.
This is a block party application. It is, it is for Hills, Hill and Bridger Street, which is Bridger and Cherry. It is for 9/7, and it's from 3 to 9. This is a, this is one that they've had before. There's not been any complaints or issues with it. There's no amplified music or anything else of any disturbance. All the paperwork is in order and has been signed off by all the relative parties.
Okay, thank you.
It was, I'm sorry, it was voted out of committee, 3 to 0 to approve.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you.
There are, there, we are having difficulty, a couple of applicants for signs have been invited to attend on a number of occasions, and they have not appeared before the committee. So those, those signed applications will remain in committee until we're able to coordinate a time where they can be present to submit their applications. So those will remain in committee until then.
Thank you. Planning and Development?
Thank you, Counsel President. Motion to receive and file Communication 568.
Second.
Thank you. So we had a good conversation last week with Director Port regarding his communication that he sent to us regarding the vacant Kmart site. Most folks know that there is a possibility of having a friendly 40B where we get to rezone this area and get some multi, much-needed multifamily housing zoning in there. We do have two items. We have the possibility of a friendly 40B, and we also have the ordinance that was put in by the councillors from Ward One and Ward Five. Had a good conversation about that as well. Councillor from Ward Five spoke to it. We went through 40B, we went through 40R, we talked about our current subsidized housing inventory, and we also discussed the development agreement that would go along with whatever goes through here. The mayor has kindly offered to have some of the councillors participate in what that development agreement's going to look like. As part of the zoning process in general, we will have a joint hearing on September 18th for the ordinance that's in place right now. So that's, that will be happening. But after this whole conversation, the committee did vote to receive and file this one, and if we get through that, I will speak to some more of the definitions afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Counsel Zede?
Thank you. I apologize, I was traveling last week, so I was unable to make the meeting, and I appreciate the Ward Five councillor, as co-sponsor of the zoning, speaking to it. I just want to make some brief comments specific to the process we're going to undertake, as opposed to sort of the merits or the underlying conversation about what should or should not happen. So my main message tonight is really to beg my colleagues here to engage heavily on this issue. You know, 40B is a, in my opinion, and from what I've learned over the years, and this is not first experience with this, is not an easy thing to do. And just because you put the word friendly in front of it does not necessarily make it so. No one person in the city really has the power to make a 40B friendly. And so I, the reason I'm begging my colleagues to engage on this is because, A, it's really important, the city needs to protect its interests, the city absolutely does have interest, of course, there's a desire to have development there. I think that's sort of broadly accepted and understood. I think that's reflected both in this memo, as well as in the proposal that you see, as well as in the good faith efforts to try and negotiate a 40B. So I don't think that's really the question. The questions, for example, lie around taking private costs and somehow making them public. I think that's something we need to be wary of as city councillors. I think that getting the right, the development that sort of makes sense for the area and will comport with what the broader plans are for the city is something that's important to us, and ensuring that things like public safety, public infrastructure, public transit ability, if you will, in the area are all things. So those things are not just going to defend themselves. That's, and so the reason why it's so important is this is, if there's question here about jurisdiction over the years, about different issues, is this the city council, or is this the mayor? This is absolutely the city council. There is basically no debate about that. We own zoning, it's our responsibility, it's, that's been codified well. And so that's something that I'm really asking to consider. Number two is, unfortunately, I do feel like there's ghosts of mobile past here. We now have to confront the question of development agreements as they relate to, you know, the city solicitor's opinion, which was that, you know, mayors can execute development agreements absent the city council. I'm just deeply troubled by that now, as I was then. And so I think we have to confront that. And again, I think development agreement, there's a lot of common sense around having one, but this is one of those issues where it's all in the details. And getting out of, or getting above the safe harbor threshold for 40B is not something that you should assume. In fact, there are some narrow parameters that have to occur for us to achieve that, if, like me, you believe that that's important, and I certainly do. And so I'm asking for your engagement. I appreciate the chair scheduling the joint hearing. That is, of course, crucial. I won't directly speak for my co-sponsor, but this is going to get pushed for a vote. I mean, I want to have this debate personally as a sponsor. I think we're entitled to that for the time that we put into it. And if the will of the council is not to pass it, that's part of the process, that's how it goes. But this isn't going to die its own death. I know with the mobile one, there was questions about, okay, it's too late, we can't consider it. I hope that there are none of those sort of comments this time around. And I'm just trying to think if there was anything else. I think that's all I want to say for today, and I appreciate the memo. I think it did give us an opportunity to at least outline the potential. Oh, I remember the last thing, I apologize. I just want to say, the last thing is, I just want to remind my colleagues and residents that 40B is not assumed. When you, when you, there's a process for 40B, of course, that involves going to the zoning board, receiving a denial, and then going to the state. The developer has to make an argument to the state about the economic viability of the project. And the argument they have to make is the project is not economically viable under the underlying or zoning provided by the city. So don't count us out, at least, you know, many of us. We're not going anywhere. There can be made an economically viable project under the PPOD proposal, but that's the heart of the debate, which I look forward to saying my piece on that. And so don't, don't just assume it will go quietly into the night. So thank you for the consideration.
Counsel Shan?
Thank you, Counsel President. Just wanted to reiterate, the mayor is not going to be doing the development agreement on his own. He has invited some of us to be part of that process, so we have that in our favor. The other thing is, I will also speak to the need for the whole council to be engaged. Director Port spoke to me last week regarding the housing production plan that will be coming into council probably in the beginning of September, and I stated to him, that's a great opportunity to bring in what we talked about with 40R, wanting to have a conversation about what that looks like for the public, and also have 40B brought in. I think everyone needs to have a good understanding of what all of these different zoning, zoning opportunities are, so everyone understands what we're up against with this one and what we're going to have going on in the future. So I think he's probably, it's not in the packet yet, but he is going to probably put something together for September 11th to have a community discussion about all of this, especially the housing production plan. So it's a good time for folks to come and learn about all the zoning that we are going to be seeing in the coming months, so.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, motion is to receive and file-
3 to 0 out of committee.
Thank you. Communication 568, receiving file?
Correct.
Further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, passes 9 to 0. Thank you, Counsel Shan. Public Works, Counsel Shan?
A quick one. I, too, have had a tough time getting folks to respond back. We have one reappointment to the planning board, so I probably will postpone that meeting, so we will cancel our next meeting. So enjoy the rest of your summer. I know some folks will be vacationing, and then we'll take that up at our next meeting in September.
Okay, great, thank you. Counsel McCauley?
Thank you, Counsel President. A motion to approve, excuse me, a motion to receive and file Communication 566.
Second.
This is a letter from Mary Murphy, a resident on State Street. She came before the committee to, she shared a letter with us, we used that letter as basis for the discussion. She shared her observations that were going on, along there. She had, she was concerned about signage and traffic volumes and speeds along State Street. She gave us specific examples, first one being State Street, where it crosses high, it goes from three lanes to one lane, and then splits left and right. It's associated, she gave some examples. She noticed that there's a double pedestrian light there, causes some heartburn for those pedestrians that are crossing, also throws off the rhythm of the intersection itself. Between Parker and State, it's densely populated, cars parked on both sides, the signs are hard to see. She's looking for maybe some lit up signs or things like that along the way. And in general, there were just a lack of 25 mile an hour speed limits. We had a good discussion about safety, safety issues we could take. We then, we did take this letter as well to Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, where we did share it with Director Amaral and others, police, the police department representative that was there as well. So we are getting some visibility on that. That's not something that we can just wave a wand and make it safer along the way, and we ask for the resident's patience in trying to do those. But we heard a number of things that we're going, that are going to improve. For example, the Ward Two councillor had shared that with the development on the corner, there'd be some improvements in access around the corners itself, better visibility itself as part of that development. Again, we're not going to solve all of the problems in one fell swoop, but we did communicate with the resident. We do believe she thinks we've hurt her along the way, and there are some concrete steps we can take moving forward. Thank you. It was 3 to 0 to receive and file.
Great. Further discussion? Communication 566. All right, motion to approve, all those in favor, say.
Receive and file.
Receive and file. Is that what I said? Yeah, that's what I meant, because you, that's what you said. Okay, and also just, we should note, Counsel Lane did need to leave, so it'd be eight of us voting. Motion to receive and file, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Counsel McCauley.
Motion to approve Order 581.
Second.
This is a licensed contractor, J&amp;Z Excavators. They joined us via Zoom, they're in Hayville, they have 10 employees. They're engaged to finish the Parker Street project, complete out the rail trail. They have in the past done some work here under another company called NUCO. They've been in business for about five years on their own. They have 20 years' experience doing this work along the way, and they're, they've built up a small fleet, but enough to handle the volume of what they're doing. Again, they're excavators. It's always good to have more parties that we can have in licensing. They had their bond in order, their paperwork, et cetera, was all there. We recommend a 3 to 0 to approve.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If we could do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Motion to receive and file Communication 533 and 538.
Second.
Both of these have to do with Plumber Spring. 533 was Plumber Spring Bridge Next Steps, and 538 was Plumber Spring Bridge Memo. I hope you read them both, they gave us good background information. It was laid out what we needed to do, what we didn't need to do along the way. But we did take a step forward last meeting to approve the request before us for Plumber Spring Bridge, so there is no need to keep them any longer. So our ask is to receive and file them. I mean, vote was 3 to 0.
Great, thank you. Further discussion? Motion to receive and file collectively, 533 and 538. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, great, thank you.
Nothing further tonight. We do, I do want to mention that right now, we're tentatively on for 819, depending on the agenda. The item that seems to have grown in stature is Order 587, which is a committee of the whole item. I do not plan to take that up until 916, our 916 meeting, so I do not plan to take it up in August going forward, and we'll see what the agenda is, and that will be out shortly. Thank you.